Oh, please do us a favor. Silence all phones so that we have no disruptions tonight. Just take your phone out, make sure it's put on vibrate. If there's any side conversation that you feel that you need to have, please step outside those doors so that you may have those conversations. Please, madam.
Okay, my name is Jeff Thomas. I'm publisher and editor of Think Five or Four. That's the person who writes for me, C.C. Campbell-Watt, from 2012. Um, it's the largest black-owned news source in the state of Louisiana. I'm also, uh, I have to be careful about how I say this because FCC rules and regulations are really strict and fines are high. But my partnership team and I, uh, partners Troy, Henry, Cleveland Spears, and Andrew Pierce and I, put together a package to purchase WBOK radio. And we're not playing with you. And we just want everybody to know that we intend to take WBOK to the next level. As a strong voice in the community, and I encourage you all to come in once we get through transition. Hopefully soon, FCC is a real bear. Uh, it's a three to six month process. We're about two months in, so hopefully soon. Thanks, madam.
Thank you, councilman. Hi, I'm C.C. Campbell-Watt, a longtime veteran journalist, works for, uh, and at American Press. I'm an independent journalist now and a community picture consultant. And I am one of Think Five or Four's writers. And you may look now today and see the article that we've written on Justice and Beyond and its concern with Sujan Waterborne, Energy, and all the rest of the initiatives that this organization takes on, like Get the Airline and a bunch of others. So we're glad you're here. We really are, I'm very proud to see the cross-section of organizations which represent to me our people who care about their community and are willing to put the work in and make things better for them. So thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Joe Russo. This is, I think, my third time back here. Seventh time on stage. Thank you for having me. Um, as Reverend Manning said, I am councilmember for District A. For those of you who are not aware, District A belongs from Lakeview, Mid-City, Hollybrook, Carrollton, and Uptown. So, um, I probably have the least racially diverse district in the entire city, but I definitely have the most philosophically diverse one without a doubt. Um, my background, I'm a lawyer, been practicing for eighteen years now. Uh, before running for office, I had been chair of a number of organizations and of course, Sujan Waterborne is near and dear to my heart because Lakeview and Mid-City were flooded as a result of August 2017. And, and really, the issues that I care the most about are the bottom line ones because I view those as covering everyone. They're not white issues, they're not black issues, they're more than issues. They cover all of us. So that's where my focus has been, that's where my focus will be. Uh, keep on hearing that I'm a Sujan Waterborne guy. Uh, I don't know if that's true, but I want to be a part of that and make sure that people are willing and feel like the city's working as well for them as possible.
All right, um, Mr. C.C. Campbell-Watt, Councilman Russo, and Jeff, thank you for being here tonight. Um, so we have intentionally invited two of the best journalists in the nation uh, to be here with us tonight, uh, so that we can govern this conversation. And so we just won't let them have at it in terms of interviewing Councilman Russo. Then we're gonna stop that about five fifty, let's say, because Councilman Russo's gotta go and we wanna leave. You all ample time to ask your questions. Remember those index cards, buckets for the right, left of the stage. All right, um, C.C. and Jeff?
Okay, so I think I'll start and give you kind of the way we intend to do it. I'll let you do it. Uh, I'm kinda gonna focus on energy questions. C.C.'s gonna focus on Sujan Waterborne questions. And the councilman can add anything that he wants. Uh, so my first question is about energy. Um, and one of the things that really concerns me is the money we spend on consultants. Seven million a year for the last fifty, sixty years. Um, we've been spending on consultants. And these consultants like to claim that we're lucky to have them because in New Orleans, we have some of the lowest rates in the country. Well, that's true if you compare New Orleans to the rest of the country. But in the state of Louisiana, the fact is, the state of Louisiana has the lowest rates in the country. It has nothing to do with consultants that advise the city council. And in fact, in the state of Louisiana, the city of New Orleans has the highest rates. So one of the things that other municipalities do is rather than spend this exorbitant amount of money annually for these consultants, they build in-house staffs of expertise. And these in-house staffs spend, cost way more money, less money, and provide better information to the regulatory bodies. And so I just wanna let you comment on that and see what you think about, uh, how we do things here in the city of New Orleans.
That, that's a great question. Uh, I just wanna say this before I answer the question, which is, since I'm Jeff before David can actually vouch for me, there is a county area meeting tonight. I'm finding all my neighborhood meetings, everybody squeezing in this week because of July four, next week, so that's the reason I have to run. Uh, to answer Jeff's question directly, two things. The first is, I know many people were there, but the last utilities committee meeting, our council utility regulatory office came to speak with us about this variation. And the proposal made by Aaron Spears, who heads our utility office, is exactly what we're talking about, which is starting to grow out purely. As of right now, there's three total employees who work for our council utility office. Now, think about all the people Energy either employs directly or indirectly as opposed to three. Where we will get squashed like a bug if you find a way only to buy only one of those few people. So we are looking at hiring a number of folks, from additional lawyers to financial people, to HR, to other folks who are gonna help us grow that internally so that we don't have to rely as much. And also, another important point is to have that in place, right? Um, I think inherent into the question, although not directly asked, is, um, a lot of times you get consultants, they're not funny. And so one of the big concerns is making sure that if you are doing something local dollars and local people, how much you can ensure the money stays here and the people who actually work and live here and live and breathe all the issues that we do. So that's another important part of all this as well, is making sure that not only are we less potentially relying on consultants that are building our institutional base internally, but then making sure that we're hiring people, where we're going to hire students, Jeff. Follow.
Well, you're an attorney, so, and I'm not. Although, funnily enough, but my question is around anti-trust laws. How is it that we have a monopoly with Energy? There's no competition in the city of New Orleans. We're regulated, our, our utility is regulated by the city council, while there's a state utility commission that regulates everyone else. Some other places, some other parishes have like three different, uh, companies they can select from, there's no competition here. Isn't that a good standing question, Mark?
The answer, the answer is no, if there's one, one person can provide it to you at that time. And of course, if somebody else is wanting to come in, they have to spend all of the smorgasbord and infrastructure those do. So let me, let me maybe back up a step too. So, um, my grandfather was on the council when there was this big argument about whether or not an opse should remain under control or should go back to the public service commission. There was a huge fight, some of the people, and it's really known about that. The ultimate determination was, it would be better for New Orleans and the people of New Orleans if there's local control as opposed to the public service. I think the question is also getting at, which I'll write out, is lack of competition means stifling behavior, is really what that means. If you have fifteen people who sell something and send it to sell to you at a smaller price, if you only have one person, who will stop with you about it like this? So what do we need to do to kind of make sure that that energy is going to stop? Now, I'm happy to take off in the next ten minutes if you want me to on that. But I feel, I feel like you have some follow-up questions on that instead of, I'm gonna interrupt.
So one of the things is, as you ramp up to CURE, what does it stand for? Council Utilities Regulatory Committee? Um, right now, there are four people, and I think we plan to double it to eight by 2021? Ten. So why is that gonna take so long? Can't we do it faster? And what do we need so that we don't get squashed like a bug by Energy? Uh, how many people do you think we need to have good information coming from our own staff in the city council?
So another great question, and look, this is one of the frequent frustrations of government. Nothing runs as quickly as it should. My monitor is getting stuck in City Hall. Our jobs make things easier than hardening people. And a lot of times it feels like government needs things harder than not easy. And I see a lot of head shaking out there because it's kids. So one of the problems is, we can't just hire people because we want to. You gotta go through the civil service process. And I think almost all of these employees will be unclassified, I mean, will be classified. So to explain to everybody, when you work for government, you either have classified or unclassified employees. Unclassified means you can be fired for good reason, bad reason, no reason at all. Um, so my staff, for example, in K D, it's absolutely safe. But my staff is, is unclassified, which means that they can come to us to police, as I think. Uh, classified employees, by contrast, have to rights process, they have to go through a process. You got to get them approved, you got to give them job applications. And, and frankly, this is getting a little bit of your bail, but it's one of the things slowing down to, to work, but, you know, is that civil service can be a wonderful protection. It means that you're not allowed to fire somebody because you don't like their look, because of what you act, because that you, you have a personal problem with that. Um, it helps, it supports security. But the problem is, we're on the gears and so fast, we're not able to grow this quickly. And this quickly.
So let's move a little bit off that topic, but this recent astroturfing of Energy and the judge ruled against Energy, but ruled in favor of the city council, which I was really happy to hear. So could you explain a little bit? I don't think everybody's clear that the judge had two arguments ahead of her, before her, rather. Uh, one was whether or not the city council did anything wrong in violation of public meetings laws, and they found that the city council did not. Yet, the judge also determined that Energy did in fact unfairly, uh, stack the room, astroturf the room. My question is, if we had in-house people who could give us information, would the council have been better informed going in? Astroturfing may not have been, uh, played such a factor. Um, and, and explain a little bit about, so it's kind of two-fold. Explain a little bit about what the judge had before her, since you were turning about it. Uh, and, and if having in-house staff would make a difference at all?
So Jeff, this is the portion I want to put everybody in, right? I'm certainly asking about the legal stuff. All right, so there are two separate lawsuits, and I'm trying to explain them as easily as I can. I also wanna say this at the outset. I know many people in this room, all of whom I like very much, but I'm gonna be a little careful in answering these questions because I am the main defendant in both of them. And as much as I like all of you, I'm not interested in being opposed about my comments that I'm making here as a result of a lawsuit, but I'm happy to speak generally about them. Two separate lawsuits, pretty much filed by the same organization. So first lawsuit essentially says, council, you made a huge mistake when you considered all the evidence about the need for a power plant. And the sort of test the judge has to look at is whether or not the council acted arbitrarily and capriciously in making its decision. That is, in the legal world, a super high standard. You know, a lot of times, for those of us who are sports fans, when you watch replay, for example, you have sort of that, that clear standard. It's not, it's not, what we say in the law is, there's basically three different types of standards, right? There's, uh, there's reasonableness, and that's kind of just kick the sales a little bit one way. Clear and convincing is higher than that, and beyond reasonable doubt is what you use in criminal. This is off, this is probably between clear and beyond reasonable doubt. It is really, really high. And with respect to that, the judge will, the council did not act arbitrarily and capriciously in making this decision. And she issued a twenty-six page, a twenty-seven page, a written decision with lots of factors about why the council acted appropriately. So that's one part. The second part, and Jeff alluded to this, and you get a really nice job because it's complicated. Remember, whenever you're a public body, you have to abide by the public, public records law. So if you're a security district, if you're a school board, if you're the city council, if you're legislature, you have to provide notice to people. And if there's a voting item, there has to be an opportunity for people to talk. The argument is, astroturfing occurred, which is paying people who are not, not interested advocates to be there to provide comments in favor of the power plant. And as a result of those people being there, um, there are some issues, obviously. Uh, the judge ruled, this is, this is where things got all started. The council did nothing wrong, but that Energy was wrong and, and obviously allowed astroturfing to happen. Now, I'm sure I'm gonna ask a sanctions question later on. So, um, I'm happy to address how the council dealt with that. Uh, and obviously the fact that we imposed sanctions meant that we, we found the concept to be horrible, regrettable, disgraceful, is the word that we've been using most of the time. Uh, I will, I will just say this, um, I'm concerned about the judge's ruling, not because it affects me or my colleagues, but because how it affects what we all choose public advocates all the time. Think about this. If somebody gets a Y, gets a Y to go anywhere publicly to address something, you have received something about you. If you not disclose that to at least the council, it indicates then that the whole vote is blown up as a result of that. Think about how many people have gotten a Y, how many people have gotten suffering? I mean, I'm getting water right now for getting them. Uh, how many people have gotten a T-shirt for appearing for something? So that is gonna be something that's gonna continue to be litigated. Um, to answer the question about, do I think in-house would have made a difference? I, I don't think we would allow that because we never, I wasn't there at the time, but I don't think you expect that people are gonna come and get paid and not represent you, that that's happening. And I think the real issue is, Energy did something that was terrible and awful. They hired people who they shouldn't have hired. Those people came in there, they got into the room, they were reading from scripts, they were hired by a third party. And I'm, and I'm not sure how almost anything could be designed to prevent that from happening. If you wanna keep the system, people aren't gonna find a way to do it. Um, and all the best that we can do is change our rules and make sure that if, uh, you're advocating, or you were there and getting paid, and we're checking that box, and now we're trying to be really, really good at asking, hey, Jane, hey, Bill, hey, Jim, are you here in representing capacity and then you're speaking about something else?
I don't wanna pick up. I'm already at the C.C.'s time, and I had questions about the sanctions, and I had questions about the power plant. I'll just ask really quickly, are you in favor of the power plant going into New Orleans?
Well, uh, that's a loaded question. Uh, what, what, I, I, it's good for us. Uh, this is the way I'll answer, I mean, there's people like Kathy and Padre. I, I read a very long statement about where I am. This is my big concern. Power plant costs over two hundred million dollars. Energy's already spent over a hundred million dollars. Um, I have a real problem in a very poor city saying that the taxpayers could be on the hook for, for that much money. And as a lawyer, I look at it, to go back to what you said, um, from the perspective of, let's say we litigate this, and, and there are all these options that are in front of you. Let's say the judge splits the bill, and the judge says fifty-fifty. Well, that's still sixty million dollars or seven million dollars people are in hook for. I can't in good faith, I feel like, as a representative of the people sitting, that's a risk I'm willing to take. Uh, that's circumstances where we work, uh, and asking behind that decision and feel like, my job is to try and mitigate and reduce costs for people with not the vaccine necessarily.
Can I, can I jump in a little quick? Just one question. Aside from taxpayers being on the hook for a hundred million dollars, as you say, Councilman Russo, are you in favor of the gas plant in the heat? All that, put aside, if that's a fair question. But, but all that business aside, are you okay with the gas plant in the heat?
Uh, I can't answer that question, so like, you know. Um, so I'm just, I'm gonna decline, so, yeah. Uh, as long as I'm with you guys, um, that's where I am.
Well, let me say this, you know, uh, the money we're on hook for, we always are on hook with Energy. The bills are through the roof, you know, it's, it's very hard to even pay every month. But more than that environment, I know that you have a bad gas plant. The impact on the health of the residents, I think it should be first and foremost. And if that means that the council doesn't have its own independent study, that might be something you want to consider. Now, let's move along to Sujan Waterborne situation.
How long you got?
I've got two minutes, and then, then, so that's fine. I'm not gonna ask the five questions, but then we have to go. So I'm just gonna get straight to the point. We have lead in our water, and I've been buying water. I have never drank fossil water since I've been a grown adult because I already knew there were constituents in the Mississippi River. Let's just start there. And now we have lead in the water. We do not want to be destroyed. What's the council gonna do about the lead pipes and the lead in our water?
Great question. So one of the things right now is, we've been talking to Sujan Waterborne a lot about this. Sujan Waterborne is actually going to touch the water right now for you, I can tell you. Um, I have a constituent, um, who lives in Broadmore, actually, in a little section there. He's had a bike. Sujan Waterborne came out and replaced the bike and, and has got it. So obviously, they know that this is a public health concern. Another thing I will tell you, the Sujan Waterborne still has incentive to create water, so they need to be super, super careful in how they deal with that. The problem has been not only the fact that there are some Sujan Waterborne pipes that have lead, which you don't want, but also people cut corners in other places in the constituency. And so I thought we might be headed is school buildings, for example, or that all to have that end of as well. And, and one of the major problems has been, the way you can get a lot of the layout is by putting buildings on it. For whatever reason, it's been way slower than you can imagine. That's unacceptable. I have children in public school, I'm drinking the water here. I want my place to be safe where we are, and everybody's children to be safe. And so, uh, whether, whether or let pipes, this has to be done and made sure that they're being equipped and taken out. People have to be safe.
So another question would be, um, we understand that there was a lawsuit uh, against Sujan Waterborne for damage to people's homes, probably in their district. But that's not the only home that got damaged. There are people who are too poor to hire attorneys whose homes have been damaged. Mine is the one. Uh, the foundation is sinking, and so what are we gonna do about that? And shouldn't, shouldn't Sujan Waterborne have to pay us some sort of retribution? Because we have to buy bottled water because of the lead in the water. Now, they can either give us, uh, some smaller bills, or they can give us the water allowance until they can deal with the lead pipes.
Uh, look, I have no problem with, with any organization that's helping making sure that things are better for you than they were before. So if you had a leaking meter, or whether you paid too much, whether or not there's lead in the pipe or something, uh, it makes sense for the homeowner to repair it at some sort of, that's, that's first of all. Second part of it is, um, we're, we've been fighting with them for almost a year about what we refer to as the seal claims. And, and Sujan Waterborne has a litigation strategy of, we lost in the court for it, we're gonna take it to a health court, we're gonna lose in the health court, we're gonna ask for, like, we're gonna try and kill it one more time for a reaching and then we're gonna try and take this to court. Well, those people have been waiting and waiting and waiting. So those, and, and to your point, there are so many people who don't have lawyers, who don't have meetings, who suffer in silence. And I, I'll just be honest with you. I honestly, and Jeff, I get your newsletters, so I'm reading it. But it's been a disappointment to me for the past year that I feel like this equity issue with Sujan Waterborne has not been enough coverage. And I wanna say that again because I think it's so important. This equity issue with Sujan Waterborne does not get enough coverage. And I think, and while I'm talking about it, let's just think a bill, for example, okay? So think about how a bill gets to you in a wrong fashion. Somebody read your meter wrong, or they estimated the bill incorrectly. That bill is then reviewed by somebody to determine that it was correct and make sure it got mailed to you. Nobody stopped that bill from getting mailed to you. The bill gets into your hands, and what do you do? You email or call Sujan Waterborne. How long does it take you to be on hold with Sujan Waterborne? How long does it take you to get out of your bed and go down to Sujan Waterborne? How many satellite offices are there in District A, B, C, D, E? Everybody in this room lives. I'll give you an answer, zero. Um, how many times do you have to fight about getting that bill reduced? How many times do you have to go, you either get a council person or go to an administrative unit and get them? I've just talked about ten different steps that slow you down. Now, if you're middle class or rich, you know what you do? You write a check and you say, I'm tired of this, and I'm just gonna get this off my back. I, I have a constituent last night who told me they had a thousand dollar bill and it's too high, write a check and three fifty, and all of a sudden. Most people can't do that anymore. Most people cannot do that. And that is the piece to me that has not gotten the attention that it really deserves, is that we live in a community where people do not have enough money. They do not have time because for them, time is money. And when you are getting minimum wage, or barely a minimum wage, and trying to hold those things together to make sure your AC stays on right now, and try to pay your rent, and try to get your Sujan Waterborne bill, and try to feed your family, something needs to be repressed. And if it means you gotta leave work to go there, it's a real problem. We've got to do a better job of that. And I just, I, I've said it a hundred times, but I, I can't emphasize it anymore.
What would you, as chair of utilities committee, consider setting up a task force when you have citizens representing for Justice and Beyond and others on it? Because somebody's gonna have to monitor Sujan Waterborne and Energy in terms of, you know, the lack of, um, the lack of reciprocity when things like this happen. The water, you know, I have a grandson whose school was cussing him and was found that there was lead in his water. I mean, the mayor actually got enraged and said in front of everybody that she found out that the water we drink goes through these turbines before they could reach our homes. So, I mean, we can't waste the water.
So, um, let me just clarify, one thing, I saw this, and it was, I'm actually chair of public works committee, just so we're on the same page. Utilities is really Energy, pretty much Cox, uh, A T and T, public works is public works and Sujan Waterborne. Um, the short answer is, Sujan Waterborne, I'll be doing this all right. Uh, and, and, and I know, there's laughter in the room, right? Um, from that response. But the, the short, the short truth is, they don't have the credibility that they need for people in the community. They need to be listening to people and going to them where they are to make sure their problems are being addressed. And I see a lot of head shaking, up and down, and, and no, this won't because it's not happening. And it's one of the reasons we push so hard to make sure there are satellite offices, no matter where you are. They're all about the need for somebody who lives, and whether you're happy you live in the land, whether you live in the World East, whether you live in Chantilly, whether you live in Conover, it's come all the way down to St. Joseph's Street. There's gotta be a place in the Mid-District to be able to sort out your problem and make sure it's working and a lot faster.
Uh, real quick, um, just so, because you know, uh, it is Justice and Beyond's hope and desire that you would author a resolution, uh, that would, uh, aim towards getting rid of all the lead pipes, uh, within the city of New Orleans that are causing hazardous lead contamination to our young people by the year 2020? Uh, I, I think the answer is that 2020, or what did you say? Flavers? We don't say 2021, I'm not giving the answer by 2021. Uh, if you are concerned, like we are, about lead poisoning, would you help author such a resolution that says that, um, the Sujan Waterborne needs to get rid of lead pipes by that time?
Yeah, I mean, let, let me say this. I'm happy to do my part in helping, whether it's resolution or otherwise, but I, I wanna be very clear about this. Council has much broader powers over Energy than it does over Sujan Waterborne. So the most we can do is usually shake our fist at Sujan Waterborne and say, I'm really angry at you. Um, and, and the other, the other, only other power we really have, Reverend Manning, is for huge, uh, reasons, right? And tell them, yeah, all right, that's right. So, um, that's something that I think when they keep on coming back to us, that we'll have to say, well, if you want this, there are some things that we need to say in exchange. And I'm happy to have that conversation at that point because one thing that you are hearing a lot of that, if you're not tuned, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make you hopefully pay attention to it, is, Sujan Waterborne's talking about, uh, increase on the freightage side of it. And, and I can't tell you how many places I go. And I can't tell you how many places I go, whether it's Holly Road, or Lakeview, or Uptown, before I even get the word "the" out of my mouth, people start laughing at me almost from the word go. So I know it's a very touchy topic right now, but I think if you're gonna look at people's rights, then people need to see what am I getting in return? What am I getting in return for the service? And for my part, I'm willing to pay for this, for the service. So one of the things that I think could be helpful for all the city government is that it be responsive to the needs of people. One way to do that is to be open after five o'clock. So Susan Waterborne can have people in their office, in these satellite offices, from five till nine. And same with traffic courts, same with all of the other government, where you have to go pay your property taxes. Why do I have to take off work? What can we do as a city to be more responsive to the needs of working people? That's a great question. I think we need voices, Jeff, is the real answer. We need people to keep on pushing, pushing forward. The one place where I can tell you we've had the most push forward lately is on short-term rentals. Because I feel like you really hear of people on short-term rentals that is about missing from nine to five in the hour. It's from nine o'clock at night till four o'clock in the morning, when the kids are banging on their drums and playing the serios too loud. And they don't, they shouldn't be where they are. And so one of the things I try to ask very much is, when we are going to do code enforcement or safety improvements for that, that's not just staff offs from nine to five. We gotta have people and inspectors who can go out at six o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the morning, and really go push off. Now, to your point, obviously, one of the things we'd like to look at is having five, seven, or eight o'clock at night so people who are leaving work will catch the bus and they can do without, you know, get up. I think that makes a lot of sense. One of the things, again, I'd be happy about is, the satellite offices for Susan Waterborne don't have to be open from nine to five. I mean, if they're open from, pick a time, twelve to six, or something like that, or, you know, that way people can go to lunch hour maybe, or maybe make it eleven to six or seven. You can go to lunch hour, you can go to work, and not even work in the middle of the day. That's really important, you know? I think a lot of times, people forget the, "Hey, I can just leave work." Well, a lot of people can't just leave work. And it's important to keep that in mind when you're going to be responsive to them.
I want to thank you for coming out tonight. You brought up short-term rentals. I think one of the things that is lost in this fair share conversation is, the money doesn't actually come until the people in law lines vote on a short-term rental tax. Can you expand upon that for us?
All right, so, everybody knows that the mayor works very hard with the legislature to get money primarily for infrastructure. And that means both Susan Waterborne and the streets. So two pieces of that are fifty million dollars in one-time money, and then twenty to twenty-six to twenty-seven million dollars in recurring revenue. Part of that recurring revenue is based on this. Hotels are taxed, I think roughly at about ten and a half, ten point seven five percent, whereas short-term rentals are only taxed at four percent. So one of the deals that the mayor said is, "Look, you have this inequity." Hotels are charged up here. Short-term rentals, which are basically hotels in residential districts, right? And if a hotel is right next door to you, it's being taxed at a much lower rate. That's not right. So what we do is make sure the short-term rental tax is matching exactly where the hotel taxes. So they're gonna come to the council and ask for that to happen, so for the short-term running, that seventy-five percent of that money goes to the city for infrastructure, and the other twenty-five percent goes to tourists. Now, can you get on my soapbox for a second?
No, please.
All right.
So, for about fifty seconds.
All right, all right. So my small soapbox with this is, it creates a perverse incentive for the city to have more short-term rental licenses, right? Because the more licenses you have, the more taxes you get. Now, as somebody who comes from neighborhoods and wants to protect neighborhoods, that's another pronunciate. So it's really important, something the mayor has a great idea, making sure we're taxing really at terms and people who are using city resources to the best of our abilities. What we don't wanna do is open the floodgates wide, destroy neighborhoods like that.
Uh, C.C. and Jeff, we're gonna move to some questions. Y'all feel free to follow up with any of these questions here. Moderator McKetzie's gonna ask those. Y'all feel free to hand those questions in as these are being asked. Keep your answers as concise as possible, so we get as big of them as possible.
Thank you, Pastor. First we have Ms. Penny. She wanted to ask her own question.
Thank you. My question is about the rate case. So, folks cannot realize that in the district being a for-profit monopoly, Entergy has a built-in profit of eleven percent. And every so often, there's hearings and then a decision is made about the rates that Entergy charges, and then how the contract from the city is gonna go. So, last week, what were those hearings? Well, all week, there was testimony from all kinds of parties. And my question is, that it was very unfair in the sense that Entergy submitted, apparently, four thousand pages of documents. Initially, then it went up to ten thousand. So it's very difficult for citizens to absorb all the material, the reasons for whatever they're proposing on the rates. And also, the question is, can you make, well, actually, I also want to say, apparently, just to get a transcript of the hearings costs five thousand dollars. So citizens can't get that. So my question is, can you make this rate case more fair to citizens? And also, I understand that we know council members present throughout the hearings. And I know you depend on the advisors for your information, but we feel like we should have representation there.
Thank you for the question. So, the transcript is really a function of how much the corporate cost. And, you know, I can't shore the corporate cost. I mean, just it is what it is, and they charge costs, and whether you're in litigation or outside, that's what you gotta pay. And frankly, as a lawyer, and another lawyer, asking for a transcript for free, I'm not inclined to do it because you're definitely the person who's feeling the hard work. So, now, if there's a way to keep the cost down, and it could be less than that, I'm happy to listen to that because if you get something cheaper, that's more accessible to the public, that makes sense. The second piece is, it's unusual for council members to attend, and, look, I would love to be everywhere as much as I can, but I feel like my first duty is to make sure that I'm paying attention to the council duties at council meetings, whatever it's at. I gotta prepare for that. And so, we have people who are going to represent the interests and make sure that we're being informed. Look, what you were talking about for rate cases, we wanna make sure that people are getting a best response. As your elected official, I wanna make sure we're getting a best response. So that way, when I come and see you, then you know that we're offering you that.
Thank you. The next question is, we are already in Detroit. Most cities in this country have natural lead. We will not go along with the permissible amount of lead in our water. We insist upon a none.
Look, I don't want people that have lead in the water. We don't want sick children. I certainly do not want them to flood Michigan here. And so, one of the reasons I focus so much on public safety is I think people tend to think it's for the justice. It's not. It's everything being safe. The streets being safe, there being midlife property, deuce-like properties, like grass being cut on times, like sea drinking water, all this is important.
Thank you. The next one is, again, you wanted to ask.
Yeah, I know you couldn't respond to this question about the power plant, whether you agree or not. So let me ask it in a little bit different way. And maybe you can just answer part of it. You know, climate change, I think, is a very serious issue. Now, our National President, Trump, of course, he got us out of Harrison, of course, you know, with the, after that stupid thing. Okay, so do you think climate change is enough of a motivation to look seriously at the power plant? Whether we can get away from this depends on how much of a human.
Well, I'll answer the last part of the question, which is, climate change is a real thing. Particularly as close to saying we have to be hyper-firmish now, right? Because I want my kids to live here. I want everybody's primary children in the room to be here. And so what can we be doing to better it if that happened now? I got an email made from Positien, who's been able to celebrate their tenth house in New Orleans, they're so on. I plan on going there. What can we be doing as a city, though, to be doing more green infrastructure? To be doing more renewable energy? And to be making sure that we're using less energy as a city, and they're all in the alliance on fossil fuels, as always. But a great point, and not only is something that we need to say, it's something we need to do. Parties are trying to enforce the renewable portfolio recently.
The next question is, the press has been covering Susan Waterborne, but isn't the council's job to stop Susan Waterborne joining all the other joint assistance?
I'm sorry, the last part is, stop doing what they're doing with citizens? Yeah. Well, I would like, I would like nothing better to have more control of Susan Waterborne. Let's just start there. But it's right, and it's the scale, it's the order, it is a state entity that has the mayor as the president of Susan Waterborne, and then has appointed positions, almost all of which come from the mayor, except for one. I'd say we take it back to three. One is the city council, and two from the board of liquidation to make sure the bonds are all dashed. The other eight positions aren't integral to us. It is frustrating. It is frustrating as your representative to not be able to hold people accountable when they frustrate my consequences. And frankly, if I didn't have to deal with Susan Waterborne, I could be dealing with a lot of other issues. It beats up at least half of our day on a regular basis between potholes, service cuts, and water issues. So, and bills, of course, bills are a big one. How do we make sure it's better for the residents? How do we make it better for people?
Thank you. Mr. Pete?
Wouldn't it make an awful lot of sense for the council simply to retire Entergy to help the East? Use the run for the city. Better here? Okay. Wouldn't it make an awful lot of sense for the council to insist that Entergy develop the East New Orleans power plant based on wind, solar, as renewables? And this plant not kill the gas plant, which is, after all, sixty percent of dirty as coal as fifty percent of it.
Look, Pastor, I appreciate the question, but I'm not getting into the arbitrary capriciousness of the decision and what the past council didn't say. I get your concern, but I'm just, as long as I'm a named defendant in the division, I'm just not gonna answer those questions.
Maybe you can ask him this, though. I thought he already recently passed an increase for Susan Waterborne for the goal of replacing old pipes and infrastructure. Didn't he not?
That's a good question. Whoever asked it, depends on what your definition of recent is. Because, remember, the street parts, Susan Waterborne. And I'm gonna try and be quick here, right, but maybe I think I gotta give an explanation on this one. You have sewer, you have water, you have drainage. Sewer and water are funded by the bills that we get every single month. So that's how those funds end up. They should be earning between a hundred to a hundred twenty million dollars in revenue every single year. Drainage only gets money from our property taxes. They get less than sixty million dollars every single year. Because of the fact that the water system and the sewer system are aging in 2012, the council passed rate increases that are supposed to go up through 2020. So you're right in the sense that you probably saw a ten percent increase this year. You'll see another ten percent increase in the bill next year, but that's from 2012.
Mr. Stan?
I can speak loud enough, so I gotta come over there and save some time. But this has to do with the housing, the bed and breakfasts. I agree with the mayor, but I also think that it needs to be a higher rate than the hotels because you're having a lot of outside companies and places coming in, buying up property, making it very difficult for people in this city to have to have normal housing. Where do you stand with that? And at what rate would you think would be fair for the bed and breakfasts?
Well, I ran on not having, and people who are here are just like, they contested us, not allowing a lot of short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. So, I mean, I've been super clear about that for two years. And I think anybody who's heard and speaks or seen me vote on this knows what I say about that issue. I think there's other ways to get bites to apple. I think the mayor feels like she's made this commitment, and that's where she is, and that's what she wants us to vote on. There are other ways, though, to deal with this. Well, let me tell you one way you can go about it. So, let's think about this. The licensing fees for a commercial short-term rental are five hundred dollars. Five hundred dollars a year. So you're paying less than two dollars a day. That's pocket change, right? That is pocket change. We gotta do better on the commercial side. The other piece of this is, I think, when, and I know you gotta be a little careful about this because you don't want people switching on other people or making the cost unnecessarily. But when you have really bad actors, the people who are really abusing the rules, you go after them. And we're gonna make examples out of those top ten people who are making neighborhoods worse, and you collect those funds. And what do you do with those funds? You need to put in enforcement, you put in the housing fund, so that way you create more affordable housing and make sure that warrants are given. Oh, well, right. I mean, look, to me, the point of this is, short-term rentals is about, generally, outside people, tourists, or visitors to the city, or somebody that's lived here, coming here and using our housing stuff, right? And so they, and the people who operate them, need to be taxed appropriately to make sure that money is benefiting the residents the same here and not going elsewhere. So to the extent that you have the rate that's being raised now, we're looking at raising the licensing fee. The other thing we're looking at raising is, there's something called neighborhood housing improvement plan, or the NIF. I think that's only a dollar a night right now. We're looking to raise that to eight dollars a night, which is a pretty significant jump. That goes for some ways that we can take these bites to apple, make sure we're generating more monthly warrants and spending more here on housing and infrastructure.
Thank you. Okay, this question is, if the EPA acknowledged that replacing part of the lead service line or with is not sufficient, can it be dangerous for months, two years? Will you require that Susan Waterborne educate people about the risk and about certified water filters?
Yeah, I mean, look, I'm always happy to ask Susan Waterborne, and they know I'm aware of that. When I get something that I'm a doggone about, this is now the fifth or sixth time that I've gotten a live question tonight. I've gotta say this, you get lots and lots of inquiries about Susan Waterborne. I've never gotten this many live inquiries at one time. So I'm happy to take this issue up with them, talk to them about what they're doing, because obviously, you need to do it in one period. Other thing is, they have a consent decree, and the federal government should be watching this. So that may be another way to break them as well.
Would you be willing to meet with a select group of Austin justices in the county to talk to you about lead in the water? What you can do to advocate protection for our citizens?
I'm almost always willing to talk to anybody, so the answer's of course, yes.
Next question. What are your plans to protect anything you've run into to go with the new insurance you're perusing?
All right, so let's talk about that for a second. As I understand the perfume situation right now, it is not, somebody's just picked up one time and they're taking it to jail. And this is something you plan on talking about Thursday, or Wednesday, at Criminal Justice today. My understanding is, they are trying to be careful on how this is being implemented. My spouse, the chief, he told me, they're coming from sporting events, they're coming from camp. It's clear that they're near relatives. They're not stopping people. They also, currently, and I feel like this has not been very well explained to the public, are using, basically, a police strike board. And if that's not happening, then I need to know about it, we need to know about it, and see how it's being enforced, right? Because it's important to make sure that things are being applied fairly, evenly across the board. And then, seeing whether or not... And then, seeing whether or not there's been any curfew violations of, of, of resulting in jail. I have not heard about that yet, I've tried to have several meetings in the last week or two, particularly as this issue continues to get really hot, and people are concerned on both sides, both about unnecessary jail, but also about car ratings, and making sure they're having positive discussions about it and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Good times, and one more question?
You have been very strong.
I'm glad that you brought that point about the human health and the curfew, because I wanted to ask you a question about, why aren't there any youth resources? Is there anything where, where kids can go to develop trade skills, or, or hold on to self-interest at an early age, instead of, of being distracted by, you know, the devotional frameworks?
Gotcha, alright. Yeah, alright, so, so can I get a little bit of a wide berth to answer this one? So, so two things on that. First is, we were supposed to have, sort of, uh, uh, something called the Early Reporting Center, that is supposed to help and provide social services and wrap around services. And there's a really great group that's, I wanna call Youth Empowerment Program, that can task a work across the city, and really, they focus on adolescent's voting before their individual justice system and afterwards as well. That deal fell through. So that is by the boards now, we need to get it back up and running, we need to get a pilot program yesterday, today, okay? Number two, um, I was the chair of the charter school board for several years. One of my issues when I left them is, they always promoted to and through college, but we never had a conversation about type of schools. And I don't see it as an either or choice. I see it as, and, and, uh, a shot in the arm on what's going on right now, number one. Number two, we have had a massive problem, massive problem, the legislature's, we're trying to get the minimum wage increase, right? How can you work around it? Well, obviously, you only have the skills for a seven twenty-five job, but you're paid seven twenty-five. How do we get people to come to jobs, electrical jobs, trade positions, not only that it pays you significantly higher than that, but also potentially gets you even more down the road if you want to get more education? To that end, I've met with, um, the leader of DESI, and we are going to work, um, on a couple of things. One of which is sort of the New Orleans Career and Technical Center, which is sort of beginning a process right now. They need to get a lot bigger, um, they're starting right now, but they, they need to grow a whole lot. Um, and then the other piece on this, some, some little things that we, we plan to should be working out with our technical schools, too. Delgado's in my district, and sort of your point, um, earlier, one of the issues is, some of these kids are getting training, or close to getting training, and what happens? You go from May through August, but nobody's talking to them or doing anything, so they file a lot of boards, and they don't get a job. And one of the things, um, the DESI director suggests makes a lot of sense, is instead of starting a program in August or September, start it in May. Let's start it a couple months earlier, so you can get people in schools. Because I really, I really do think you're, you're right about this, that certain of the problems are because there's lack of folks, there's lack of promise, there's no clear path forward, and how do you show people not only that they care about you, but that we're gonna try and help you get somewhere?
Thank you, Constable Russo. Constable, what did you say? I know you gotta go, a six fifteen, it takes, takes sixty seconds to give us your closing remarks.
Absolutely. Um, first, thank you for having me tonight. I, I hope everybody knows, um, that even though District Day necessarily isn't representative of the entire city, my values are representative, I think, of what New Orleans does. And that is a city that's welcoming, that is inclusive, and that works for everybody. It's important to me that we make sure we have a city that we can live in, that is safe, that is healthy, that's affordable, and that helps us to grow. And I think that last piece is maybe the most important of all. And one of the things I was talking to, happy about before, before I sat here tonight, is, we have got to do a better job of urging some of our partners. And it starts, I think, very early on sometimes, where you went to Jesuit, where you went to thirty-five, well, we didn't, right, same all, so we, we don't necessarily, right, same areas, so we don't necessarily run in the same circles, right? Until you get older. How do we start doing a better job of addressing that? How do we start making sure that we're sitting down, making sure we're having conversations and not rallying each other so much? And how do we make sure that everybody's working, um, for the same goals, which is to make sure New Orleans is a good place for everyone?
Thank you, Constable. Please show some gratitude for, Constable Russo, thank you so much for being with us tonight. Uh, uh, Jeff and C.C., if you could stay with us for just a moment, we're gonna continue to be blessed by your company, Constable, and thank you again.
Thank you, thank you.
You are first in this hearing, so your other council members, we look forward to having them here on this, and on as well, too. If y'all could sit back, we're, we're not done yet, we're gonna move to our action time, and we're gonna hear from, uh, C.C. and from Jeff Thomas, and, uh, use their expertise for just a moment, um, for you all to, to tell us, uh, just about what you're doing, what your assessment is of tonight, and, uh, where you think we need to go in terms of moving forward, uh, with council members and these issues that you talked about tonight, and interviewed, uh, Constable Russo on. So if you all could just gather back together, uh, we're gonna do this till about six thirty, and then we'll call for some action, as to what you think we should do next. Uh, C.C., Jeff, please.
Well, I think that mainly is in relation to the, um, the Surgeon Waterboard, which is a state empowered agency, but the mayor appoints all the people, the majority, that we need to have a campaign that targets the mayor, she needs to come down here and tell us, she will do, since these are our appointees, and then we need to deal with our state legislators, since this is about a state empowered agency, we need to get some of the state legislators here to come up with a state task force, if you will, or come up with some resolution on how we can get the lead out of the water. You know, because I think at this point, Surgeon Waterboard should be paying us money to be able to buy the water we have to buy every month.
And I take them a global approach, and I, I just think that tonight was great. It was incredible, this is what New Orleans is about to be. You have an elected official coming out, talking to people who are engaged and informed and wanting information, this is what makes this a great city. I don't think this happens everywhere else, in schools like Justice and Beyond, that make New Orleans one of the best places to live and to live in the country. And, and to that end, I, I say that we need to get every, there should be, every city council person should come before Justice and Beyond, that you should have a schedule in my mind, and you should also have, uh, a topic that they can be prepared to discuss. And if you do that, lay it out, I think, um, the, the city is a better place to be. They need to hear from us. And, I mean, they, they are here to represent us, and, and, and for their opinions to come and be their targets, it needs to reflect what the people think and feel. And the only way that happens is to be born...